Ladies and gentlemen, we're going to reconvene our school board meeting. And this is one of our favorite times of the meeting when we get to turn it over to Superintendent Hemel, when she provides her Making a Difference Award. So I'm going to turn this over to Ms. Hemel as she goes down to the podium.
Our first Making a Difference Award today goes to Mr. Ray Darling. So would you like to come up while we talk about you? And if you don't, I don't care, come on up.
Miss Darling, you come too. Believe me, somebody in the picture's got to look pretty. You come right up here. You get to come right up here. I know how much you hate this.
I would like to read a little bit about Mr. Darling, and then we will, Mr. Thomas or Kennedy will present him with a certificate. I don't know how many of you all know that Ray has been a, I would consider, a friend for many, many years. And we were outside talking about the number of people that he's impacted, whether it's through his rotarians, whether it's through the kids in the school, and just an impact that you've made on the community. So I'm going to read a little bit, I think Mr. Burge wrote about Mr. Darling. "I would like to share with you what makes Mr. Darling special while we're honoring him today. Ray is a member of what has come to be known as the Greatest Generation. Ray was born in Maine, grew up in an orphanage in Maine which housed 30 children." And I share that with you even at the age of 95, Mr. Darling, that he had attended one of our high school award ceremonies, and he walked out and he told his wife, Ms. Jane, that even though he was so honored that day to watch all of our students walk across the stage and receive high academic awards, scholarships and those, he walked out and said he would like to find something that he could honor many, many students throughout the district. Some are struggling students, students have made a difference, students have turned their lives around, and students who would be recognized by their teachers and staff at their school to let everyone know that they have made a difference. So with that, Upward Bound was born, and it was born in 1990, 25 years ago. So, Mr. Darling, we want to thank you from the bottom of our hearts for what you have done. If your fellow rotarians would like to stand up at the same time, because all of them, they're also very involved with that program. And Hemel attended an Upward Bound function to watch those little guys and gals walk across the stage with the grins on their faces. They feed them breakfast, they honor each one of them, and they're all given a certificate. And, Mr. Darling, we thank you for the job well done and getting things started.
We're going to speed on down here so we can get everybody here.
Y'all want to come over here so we can get everybody in?
Come on over.
It's like a big group shot.
A little holder. Is there anything you want to say before you get up?
I've seen a lot of you people before. I am proud to be a member of Rotary that has provided this program for about 10,000 kids. I thank Rotary, and I want to give them the full credit for this, especially the kids being here, because they've done so much to help the program. And we're so proud. I've met my wife, she's so very good. You know, we in Rotary are proud to be able to do something to help the young people of this county. And I would say this, we do a lot of people here and in the county who do a hell of a lot of young people in Rotary. And I'm kind of ashamed, having so many people who have nothing to do in this county and could help the little kids, and they don't do it. I want Rotary to do it too.
And I just want to say to Ray and the rotarians here today, you all, for making a difference, we're so thankful. Thank you. Our next award goes to one of our teachers, Amanda Matthews. Would you please come up? We wanted to recognize Amanda today because she was a part of a statewide video that was loaded up on YouTube, Facebook, several different sites that promoted the arts. And we all know how important the arts programs are to Citrus County schools and all of our kids, and we just wanted to thank you today for making a difference, standing up for the arts, and letting people know where Citrus County really is. So we thank you for what you did.
That's my husband. Yes, thank you to my husband. And that's my principal, Mr. Davis. Thank you, Mr. Davis. I appreciate being allowed to work with kids and encourage them in the arts, and it is appalling, and it's a little blessing. So thank you so much.
Our next Making a Difference Award goes to the Emeritus Quanis, if Mr. Fitzpatrick and Mr. Davis would come forward. Emeritus Quanis has been very active with our students in Citrus County. Just this past week, they attended the Crist River-Lacanto game. They cooked 950 chickens. And the tickets that each school sold kept every penny of it, correct? I think Crist River High received 6,000, or Crist River High, 6,000, Lacanto High, 3,500?
3,500.
3,050. So almost $10,000 in checks went back to two of the schools. They donate to every school in the district. They bring them a gift card so that they can go out and buy supplies for their needy. They support their key club advisors at each high school. And we just thank you for making a difference in our kids, because that money really goes a long way in our schools. So thank you all.
We do it all for the kids, all through Citrus County. There's other Quanis clubs in other areas, but we're doing it for the kids, so we go. That's our main goal. The kids of Citrus County.
I think next year's chicken tickets are between Crist River and Citrus, correct?
Yeah, it's a challenge every year, and the winning school...
We're going to win again.
Yeah, right. The winning school gets to do it again the following year.
I cooked for everyone that left you. They've been in all three of them coming up.
Thank you all. Our next Making a Difference Award goes to Citrus County Blessings. If Debbie and Grace will please come up. I think most everybody is familiar with the Citrus County Blessings. They changed their, I guess, corporation or their organization a few years ago because some of their dollars had to go to the National Association. Now, every penny stays in Citrus County. And I will tell you, there's probably, I don't know, any two women work any harder than you two. But Grace, I will tell you that Debbie called me that night and said that, I won't give the exact date, she said, but since they've hired Grace and she's in training to take over completely from Debbie, that Debbie said she was 60-plus years old and you were 20, and you were wearing her out. But Citrus County Blessings, they're in every elementary school, which is 11 of our schools. They're in two middle schools and one of our high schools. And I was just speaking to someone the other day, and they're trying to get into another school. So they go out in the community, they sell their program, they go out and raise the money, and they do many, many things. And how many students?
1,250.
1,250 students get to take food home on the weekend so they're not hungry. So thank you for what you do. The Gray's, you want?
Yes.
Let me just tell Grace something before him. So I got a message right before we went on today, and that is that Ms. Grace knows that I've been working with a foundation on a donation, and I just got word that you were approved for $3,000 for Blessings, so...
I think I have the check today.
Did you?
Thank you so much. I also just wanted to say briefly that we also have a specific appreciation of the symbol without her, we would not be in our schools. In 2009, Debbie asked if they could come in and start at one of our schools with a pilot program, feeding 50 students. Since then, we've grown to the 1250, but without the symbol support, we certainly wouldn't be able to be doing our program. So thank you. I'm also going to take one second for Selfless Promotion. We have a Halloween costume ball coming up in October. Oh, like it's October. October 30th. Tickets are $50 apiece. All of the proceeds will come straight back to our program in 12 hours to meet more students. I have tickets, they make great decisions.
And last but not least is our Education Foundation. Mr. Barbieri, have the group one come up, please, all of the board members? And I won't give you all the dollar amounts and things like that, because I know Stephen's going to give us an update, but we just want to say thank you from our school system for doing what you all do, raising the thousands and thousands of dollars that you raise every single year that goes directly back into the classroom. And Stephen's even taken upon himself when he goes up to schools, he says, "Call me if you need something." So he's really reached out to our schools and our teachers and our staff, and we just thank you all for the countless hours. And Ms. Bryant, you're a board member, please come up here. Okay. But we just want to thank you all for what you do, and it's like many, many organizations, the same few do it all. So, and you're looking at many of them that spend many, many hours, weekends and nights, some bartending at night now to raise money as a fundraiser, as a fundraiser. But we thank you all for what you do, because you've served and made an impact on all of our kids. So thank you.
Thank you, Stephen. You go right ahead. And we want to thank the Educational Foundation just a little bit before we started. We approved by taking that donation of almost $40,000 for computers, and we're excited about that.
Wonderful, and that was part of a $100,000 anonymous donation that we recently received from a fine retiree here in Citrus County. It's been a few months since I've been in front of you again. For the general public, I'm Steve Barbieri with the Citrus County Education Foundation. Tried to get in front of you quarterly, I got a little delayed this time, so I want to bring you up to date. I've already provided some information for you there at the table. I don't know, do you need to put it up on the... I can just walk you through it. What I've given you is kind of a trend. There's two graphs there. I wanted to take you through sort of where we were just a few years ago and where we've come to. The first graph I'd like you to take a look at is the P&amp;L graph. It's a line graph right in front of you there. It's looking at three years, our revenue, our expenses, and then our program expenditures. So you'll see the line all the way at the bottom, the lowest number that you're getting on a consistent basis is what we're spending to run the foundation. For the last three years, it's remained relatively consistent. We've done a good job of keeping the salary, the overhead, the cost, everything very flat and level despite the growth that's occurred in the foundation and in our ability to give. The other two lines you see there are our revenues and our program expenses. So it's the money we're bringing in and the money that we're giving back out to the school system through programmatic expenses, everything from the Teacher of the Year event to the mini-grants and the different projects that we're applying to. So you can see, just a few years ago, three years ago, our revenue coming in was only about $60,000. Our expenses going out, or excuse me, $80,000, our expenses going out were around $120,000 in the last two years. Since then, we've exceeded $400,000 now in revenue, and we're still giving out close to 300, between 300 and 400,000 in programmatic expenses. So we flipped it from running a deficit to now where we're actually bringing in more than we're giving out, and we're still giving out all-time highs. So that's really just an homage to the amazing board. A few of them were here tonight, but most of them are very thankless people. They didn't want to come tonight just because they don't want the recognition, they continue to want the recognition to be on our amazing teachers, our amazing administrators and staff members. You know, I get a lot of thanks in the position I'm in, because I'm sort of the face of what's going on. But really, without this board, in science terms, there was a lot of potential energy when I came in. This was a rocket ship sitting on a platform waiting for that ignition switch to go off. And since I've come on in the end of 2013, it's just explored into a whole nother stratosphere. So I couldn't do it without this amazing board, the amazing guidance of Ms. Hemel and Ms. Bryant on our board, giving us advisory positions on anything that we decide to do, and without the school district as a whole. So that takes us to the second chart, which is this past year. So this is our unannulated financials from the past year. What I wanted to give you there is a breakout visualization of where the money is coming from. If you are familiar with what the board was doing, you know, three or four or five years ago, 90% of our revenue would be just in the fundraising department, which is your golf tournament every year and other fundraising-type events. Now, as you can see, there's a pretty diverse mix. We've made it a very concerted effort to find individual donors, to increase our relationships with local businesses, and now that fundraising piece of the pie has shrunk down to only about a third. Then we have another third, which is direct giving, things like the $100,000 donation or the $28,000 you recently received from Suncoast, or the $10,000 you received this past week from Crystal Automotive, which is a $50,000 over five-year stretch gift we've gotten from them. So we've made an effort to find additional revenue streams besides just the golf tournament. That being said, the fundraising is also ramped up as well. So even though the percentage of the pie is getting smaller in terms of percent, the overall pie is growing as well. And as you all know, our coupons for classrooms program last year, really, which falls under that fundraising category, really kicked that area up in raising over $84,000 from the school district. And on that note, we are in year two of that, and I brought my sales team with me here today to help sell some coupon books. So if I can have my cash receiver, Sophie, please come forward, and my book salesman, Logan, please come forward. They would like to see if anyone would be interested in purchasing a coupon for the classroom sales. Anyone, anyone, raise that money high. We're the ones who are going to have to take their money first, then we can get to the audience.
Sophie.
Sophie gets the money and Logan hands out the books.
I already have the book. Your dad already has the book.
That's right. She was advanced copy. So come around, go around the audience. Thank you. So again, that's been a tremendous program. The way we allocate it is that the school selling the books get a percentage of the sales, and then the district-wide gets a percentage, and then the total of last year, a little over $84,000, approximately $45,000 stayed directly in the school, and then just under $40,000 came to us for our general unrestricted contribution. Don't bribe the salesman. Come on. So again, I think we've done a great job as a foundation in diversifying our revenue streams, so that if one year we get a rainstorm, golf tournament is not looking good, we can't sell any tickets, that doesn't destroy the budget for the entire year. I know, I said that one...
Don't say that!
Never happened. We've always had a beautiful golf...
He's done right on the golf.
I didn't want Jason to hear that one. I do want to mention another new program that we have, a new fun event. It started last year, it was our first year. It's called Foundation Fest. It's on December 19th, whatever day the school gets out, and it's going to, it features a battle of the band teachers competition. So we have teachers from six of our different schools right now. We're hoping to get two more. They bring their own bands, they're friends they play with outside of the school system, and they compete for a $1,000 prize for the school system. We have celebrity bartenders, and we have a silent auction as well. So that's a fun event. It'll be here in Emeritus on the last day of school. I'll be sending in invites to all of you if you'd like to attend that. The other document you have is the last year's financial breakdown. So that talks about that 412,000 that's on the pie chart. That shows you the money, what areas it came in, and how it was generated. Then on page two is our expenses. You can see the total expenses, the offices expenses, the overhead, the payroll expenses are all listed there. Those are very small in comparison to the overall number, which is 324,000 in total outgoing expenses. So that's our history. That's been the last three years. For this year, I know you heard about one of our great programs today. Hopefully, you all have been checking that consent agenda when money comes through, if that gets put on your consent agenda. So you'll know about some of the other programs that we've already funded this year. Year-to-date, we've already given, with the $40,000 that was approved today, already given over $165,000. So, and that doesn't count the mini-grants, which we intend to give out next month, which will be at least another $75,000. For the mini-grants, we received 172 applications from your local teachers requesting over $133,000 in funding. So we're having to make some tough decisions on that, but we hope, we've already allocated $75,000 and hope to be able to give even more if we can find some additional partnerships. Other expenditures coming up, we have a pending item for $10,000 for the swim program and $10,000 for the Reach Summer Program. Those are both for the meeting this month and as part of a $60,000 free allocation. So they should be approved as long as the application, everything that is sent out is in proper form. Are there any specific questions about, I know I'm throwing a lot of numbers and information at you right now. Are there any specific numbers on any of that?
I see, in excitement, I see galaxy of stars for those who don't, I don't know that I heard it tonight, to give a shameless plug for you all, because we couldn't do that galaxy without. And was decorated, it set a new tone for how amazing that night was and how it felt. So thank you.
And that's one of the things the foundation's always been happy to provide, is the galaxy that starts the Teacher of the Year event. And we just keep continuing to raise the bar, and Amy and Shonda and Linda and everyone who work on that event planning committee do just an amazing job with it. Also, just off the top of my train of thought, there's one other item I wanted to get to, but we still have the Hostel event, we have all of that coming up. So in terms of our foundation, the mini-grant night, we would invite all of you to come out to the awards gala. That'll be on November 5th at the Curtis Peterson Auditorium. So that's the night where we give out the $75,000 plus in mini-grants. We hope you all can attend. It's a great night. We make it quick, but we make it fun. And we'll actually have some of the teachers from last year who won grants there showcasing what they did with their classroom. So we're going to add a little bit of a show-and-tell element to it. So get there early and meet with those teachers and see all the great stuff they did with the funds last year, and then hear about all the great things that are going to happen this year. As a side note, and again, to reinforce that the foundation's always been here, they've always been working for you. I was speaking with the retired educators group yesterday on this country kitchen at their luncheon, and what a great group. We have a great group of retirees, not only that worked in our school system, but in others that have relocated here. And I had more than one teacher, but one specifically who came up to me and talked about a mini-grant she received 12 years ago for the money to print newspapers in her fourth-grade classroom and buy a digital camera, and digital cameras had just come out. And she was telling me about a student that she just had, the day before yesterday, so the day before, contacted her and talked about how she had been inspired to go on and get a degree in English and writing and literature because of getting to do a newspaper in fourth grade in her classroom. So she was already glowing from that, and then to see me and tell me about it, I got to glow, and now I'm giving that to you all to hopefully make you glow a little bit as well. So all of these mini-grants, it's amazing to see what the teachers do with $500, $1,000 and how they change lives and how they inspire the students going forward. So it's really a great honor that we get to do that. Any other questions, or if you see something in there or have any, please don't hesitate to contact me or invite me back to a quarterly meeting or a monthly meeting. I'm always here at your disposal, and I appreciate everything you all are doing for our students, and let us know how we can help make everything you want to see happen happen. Thank you.
Thank you, Stephen, and thank you to the foundation for all you're doing for our students. We have a recognition and approval of Red Ribbon Week proclamation. If I can get a motion? Second. A motion by Ms. Powers, a second by Mr. Dodd, to have recognition and approval of Red, I always do this, Red Ribbon Week proclamation.
Easy for you, sir.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Five-zero, and I'd like to ask Ms. Powers if she would read into the record the proclamation.
If you'll put the mic close to me so we can hear it. Whereas the Citrus County School Board and the Anti-Drug Coalition of Citrus County value the health and safety of all of our citizens, and whereas substance abuse is particularly damaging to one of our most valuable resources, our children, and a contributing factor in the three leading causes of death for teenagers, accidents, homicides, and suicides. And whereas it is the goal of Red Ribbon Week, Citrus County Schools and the Anti-Drug Coalition of Citrus County, to involve families, schools, businesses, churches, law enforcement agencies, and service organizations in all aspects of this campaign, and establish an atmosphere that supports awareness, education, and ongoing initiatives to prevent illegal drug use. And whereas the Red Ribbon Week campaign theme promotes family and individual responsibilities for living healthy, drug-free lifestyles without the legal drugs or the illegal use of legal drugs. And whereas there are many activities planned during the Red Ribbon Week campaign in Citrus County. Now therefore, be it resolved that I, and speaking for Sandra, Sandra San Hemel, serving as the superintendent of Citrus County Schools, will do hereby proclaim October the 26th through October the 30th, 2015, as Red Ribbon Week.
There's really not a lot I can add to the proclamation other than to say thank you. Without the school system, there would be no Red Ribbon Week. And it is an opportunity for the entire community to be able to take advantage of an opportunity to really have their awareness raised and to help all of us protect our children. to really have their awareness raised and to help all of us protect our children, keep our children safe and drug-free. I do have, I want to make sure each one of you have a copy of the head of the report, just so you know all the different things that we're going through here. And I think you know from the quarterly substance abuse survey, that things are going much better, although we are looking at an upsurge in kids using baby products. And we're looking at an upsurge in male violence. So these are the two things that we're going to be looking more carefully at. I'm excited about this. But thank you for partnering with us on that really big idea.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
Thank you. Board members, we are going to recess our regular meeting, and we are going to open our public hearing. And our public hearing, I'll ask Mr. Dixon to come forward. We have, it looks like, three items to approve today.
Yes, good afternoon, board members. We have three policies to consider today. The first is a request to approve the revision to policy 4.21, selection and management of instructional materials. The language adds citations 1006.283 and 1006.40 Florida statutes. Also adds three new items to be consistent with 1006.283 Florida statutes and renumber sections 5 through 12.
I move to approve the revision to policy 4.21, selection and management of instructional materials.
Motion by Ms. Bryant, a second by Ms. Balfour, to approve the revisions to policy 4.21, selection and management of instructional materials. Before we approve this, I just need to open it up for any public comment. Anyone wishing to come forward to speak on the approval to revisions for policy 4.21? Anyone wishing to come forward? Board members, if there's no questions, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries five zero.
The second item is policy 4.89. This is a request to approve revisions to physical education program. The phrase "next generation sunshine" has been removed and "current" has been added. Policy also adds citations 1003.41 and 1003.42, as well as 1003.453 Florida statutes.
I move to approve policy 4.89, physical education program.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Powers, a second by Mr. Dodd to approve the amendment provisions of policy 4.89, physical education program. Anyone wishing to come forward to speak on policy 4.89? Anyone wishing to come forward? Are there any questions, board members? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries five zero.
And the third and final policy change is a request to approve policy 7.70, purchasing and bidding. This adds section 1G, revises section 3E and 5F.
Can I take a motion?
I move to approve policy 4.21, selection and management of instructional materials.
Oh, sorry. I made a motion to approve policy 7.70, purchasing and bidding.
I have a motion by Ms. Balfour, a second by Ms. Powers, to, to approve the revisions of policy 7.70, purchasing and bidding. Anyone wishing to come forward in the public to talk on policy 7.70? Anyone wishing to come forward? Any board, I'm sorry, any questions, board members? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries five zero. I'm going to go ahead then and close the public hearing. We're going to stand in recess until 5:45, and then we'll reconvene at that time our regular meeting.